And it is the longest. Good evening and welcome to this August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, legislative meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. City Clerk, would you call the roll? Brenda Schaefer. Brenda Wolf.
Mayor Morse.
Present.
Commissioner Hassel.
Present.
Commissioner Reddy.
Present.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners. We have enough for a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And now if you'd join me within the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to invite Jeff Ebeck, Kevin Nallett, Emily Manning, and Tim Steffensmeyer to come up to this microphone and we'll have, we'll issue a very important proclamation. Whereas Kansas State University was found.
Whereas Kansas State University was founded in eighteen sixty-three at the nation's first operational land grant university.
I don't know.
Jared can do it all.
Thank you. All right. There, that's on. All right. Whereas Kansas State University was founded in eighteen sixty-three as the nation's first operational land grant university. And whereas connecting meaningful, meaningfully with communities is core to Kansas State University's value and identity as a public research land grant university. And whereas K-State has demonstrated commitment to mutually beneficial exchange, exploration, and application of knowledge, information, and resources for local, state, regional, national, and global communities. The university celebrates the strong partnership and spirit of reciprocity with the city of Manhattan and the surrounding community, which has been recognized nationally as having one of the best town and gown relationships in the country. Kansas State University and the city of Manhattan and the surrounding community are committed to collaborating to address issues important to the well-being of the citizens of Manhattan and beyond with applied science, teaching, learning, engagement, and scholarship. This partnership between Kansas State University and the city of Manhattan creates opportunities for powerful learning, professional development, and career success for our students as engaged citizens of Kansas and the world. And whereas Kansas State University and Community Partnership Day is a day to celebrate the longstanding collaboration, encourage connection, uphold examples of engaged partnership, recognize future opportunities for partnership, encourage additional dialogue about important issues for our community, and commit to a stronger future together. Now therefore, I, Linda Morse, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim Thursday, September first, two thousand and twenty-two, as K-State and Community Partnership Day in the city of Manhattan and in cooperation with our region to advance and celebrate the many decades of collaboration and engagement. So I'm, I want to present this proclamation on behalf of the city of Manhattan. It's a pleasure to do that. I used, I worked at K-State for thirty-nine years. So it's a pleasure to have you here, and I know how important this proclamation is to you as you go around the state to every county. So who would, who would like to be the speaker?
I can speak first. So I am Jeff Ebeck, the Student Buddy Vice President at Kansas State University. So I kind of represent the students to administration, the city, and kind of on all facets. And the unique thing about this new community visit schedule is we're going to highlight the student experience that is unique to only Kansas State University. And kind of our big call to action is to hope that we have as many community members as possible at these events that will be highlighted on our website and basically be listed throughout the day.
Thanks, Jeff. Jeff represents what we're going to be holding up these visits. The first ones here in our community in the Flint Hills region, it's going to stretch across Star Three County. It's on September first, we're going to hold up a bunch of our partnerships as a way to celebrate those and also as a way to listen and identify how to deepen those in the future. And we're going to be replicating this kind of throughout the state. And students are going to do a fair share of the facilitating and spreading the message. So thanks, Mayor. Really appreciate it. And Commissioners, thank you all, and hope to see some of you there on September first.
Go Cats.
K-State doesn't come often for a proclamation, so it's been, it's nice to have them here. The next item of business is Commissioner Comments. Commissioners, do you have anything you wanted to discuss this evening? Okay. Commissioner Reddy, you look, you didn't say no.
I was going to make, I was going to make one comment. I just want to say appreciation to Parks and Rec for managing to keep the pools open and keep all the lifeguards in there because I think, you know, I think Ogden had to close their pool. And so the crew running that did a great job this year. And there were a couple of questions about what about the Splash Park and Blue Earth, you know, Plaza, and I believe those are going to continue to be open for a while based on the weather and things of that nature. So they'll still be out there for some of the, some of the youngsters to have some fun in. So, so good job on the pools this year.
I just wanted to say I'm glad that we did the proclamation with Kansas State University today. I was at the, at Long's Park yesterday. There was a celebration for India's seventy-fifth Independence Day, and Dr. Linton was there. And I asked him how many counties he's visited so far, and I believe he's visited sixty counties. His goal, of course, is to go to all of them. And I think that's a, a good goal and also to meet our surrounding areas and our partners. We have a really good town gown relationship, and I'm glad we are committed to that. Also, USD three eighty-three schools open tomorrow, so I know several folks are probably at back-to-school night tonight. Please be cautious of the speed limits in the morning as you head off to work. I know there's construction going on, and now you just need to slow down a little bit more for students. There is lots of jobs available for paraprofessionals, bus drivers, custodians, teachers, across the board. So if you are interested or are licensed or would like to substitute at any level, please contact USD three D three administration and see where you would be a best fit. We could certainly use all of our community members in that process. You'll also see a lot of Kansas State University students coming back. That'll add to the congestion. We welcome them back, and we hope they have a wonderful semester here in Manhattan. And if they look kind of lost or navigating the roundabouts or whatever it might be, show them some grace. And like I said, we're very happy when they always return back to our school and our community. Thank you.
I'd like to, in addition to that, make a pitch for employment with the city. Go to our website, cityofmhk.com. We have jobs open also, and we would welcome applications from you all, so please do. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items which have been previously reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request an item be moved or separate, or a separate discussion and consideration immediately following the consent agenda or at a different point on the agenda if desired by the city commission. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent items?
Yeah, I want to, I want to comment on item, item F, which is a resolution to approve a special event alcohol permit for third Thursday, which is DMI. And I just want to put in a plug for them. I followed an event they did this summer called the Twelve Drinks of Summer Event. They also do it for Christmas, and they sold two hundred and eighty-five, you know, tickets. And of course, that drove people to all the downtown restaurants. And the net result was people spent a little bit over thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Now that's economic development when we talk about, you know, making an investment and turning it into tax receipts. And then the other beauty of that is, of course, that was all alcohol sales tax on those drinks, which means a third of it came back to Parks and Rec and a third of it came back to the Special Alcohol Board. So I think DMI does a great job and definitely support that resolution because it's a, you know, they do some well-run events. I think that third Thursday has been quite successful. And so good, good job, DMI.
Anyone else? Is there a motion? Well, I guess we need to have the public comment period for the consent agenda. If you have anything you'd like to comment on, there's an agenda out back at the, at the door in a little slot outside. Okay. Seeing no one for public comments. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. City Clerk, are there any comments from the Commissioners? Any additional? All right. City Clerk Brenda, would you call the roll or, yeah, the vote?
Commissioner Hassel.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Then, um, let me jump a page there. Tonight on the agenda, we have four, actually, public hearings, but they have to proceed one at a time. So the first one is to consider an ordinance amending the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan by adopting and incorporating the amended Bicycle and Pedestrian Systems Plan. And Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening again, Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. And before you this evening, we have an amendment to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Systems Plan, which we also refer to as the BPSP. I don't know if that makes it easier or not. We just get in the habit of saying that. And we're amending this plan to include a safety action plan. The reason is there is a federal grant that is available right now called Safe Streets for All, and this was established under the bipartisan infrastructure law, or commonly known as BIL. There is one billion dollars available each year for five years. And what this grant does is help to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries. So we are talking about all modes. It's not just bicycle and pedestrian. However, some of the emphasis areas should be on also accommodating bicycle and pedestrian modes to help prevent fatalities and serious injuries. Part of this grant required a safety action plan to be developed. So the original Bicycle and Pedestrian Systems Plan, it was great. It identified a lot of projects and deficiencies in our current system. However, we didn't have the specific component. So that's really, it's just adding another chapter to the end of that document and amending it to incorporate it. To give you a little bit of an idea of the timeline of events, the original BPSP was adopted back in March of two thousand and twenty, and there hasn't been any significant changes to it since then. In, in August, that's when we're looking to incorporate this seventh chapter, if you will, the safety action plan into that document. And to do that, we have to amend the comprehensive plan because it was adopted into the comprehensive plan. In September, we will come back before you and ask you to pass a resolution to allow us to apply, to apply for that Safe Streets for All grant opportunity. We have a bicycle and pedestrian intern from K-State. He did a fantastic job of putting this together, actually wrote that chapter for the BPSP. And so some of these slides I stole from what he presented last night to the planning board, this being one of them. The BPSP identified around a hundred and thirty projects that we would need to do to build out our bicycle and pedestrian system. He then took those hundred and thirty projects and went through a series of different filters to really whittle this down to nine. The first of that was looking at safety as an aspect, since this is a Safe Streets for All grant. That got us down to around twenty-two projects. Then one of the components was to look at equity. That, after putting it through that filter, we were down to seventeen. And then we started looking at the effectiveness of the improvement that was being proposed. And so what we have now are nine projects that would, that are identified in this safety action plan. And it just so happens that the way that this worked out is this first project here is the North Manhattan Avenue project that's underway right now that we're, there's different components of it. This, this project would go from Blumont Anderson up to Claflin. Part of that project's scope includes the signalization of some of those intersections. It includes a separated bicycle, two-way bicycle lane from Blumont up to Vitier. And then there's also a couple of projects that Public Works is working on with K-State to help with traffic flow of some of their internal roads that empty out onto North Manhattan. So part of this, the, the safety action plan that we have before you tonight, it will not discuss the project that we're going to look at applying for as part of that grant. I just wanted to include it as part of my presentation this evening. So the, the table that will be in the safety action plan is what you see here minus that red box around project number one. The timeline for the application, as I mentioned, Planning Board heard this last night. They unanimously approved it, five to zero. There were no comments from the board or the public on this item, and they, they passed a resolution to support it. This evening, you have the first reading of the ordinance that would be needed to amend the comprehensive plan. September sixth, you would have the second reading of that ordinance, and we will also ask you that evening for a resolution for the grant application. The deadline for this opportunity is September fifteenth, so we are quickly approaching that. The requested action for you this evening is to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the Manhattan Urban Area Comprehensive Plan by adopting and incorporating the amended Bicycle and Pedestrian Systems Plan by reference as presented. And with that, I will stand for any question that you may have.
Commissioners, do you have questions? I had a question about the, the, that little map on the back.
Yes.
And it's specifically where the seven is that's on Casement Road. Is it really offset? Is it over there to the right somewhere? Or is it really in conjunction with Tuttle Creek Boulevard?
That's a great question. It's actually something we've talked about internally. The original BPSP did have it within the right-of-way of Tuttle Creek Boulevard, which is probably not feasible, given a variety of different constraints there. And there's the, the Hayes Drive sidewalk or multi-use path that's being constructed right now, along with that, the trail that was also constructed in that area. So that project's scope will likely change. We just didn't deviate from what was originally recommended as part of that initial plan. But there definitely needs to be some further thought put into that specific project.
Basically, it's a placeholder for the area from Tuttle Creek to Hayes.
Correct. That's a great way to think of it right now.
There.
Yes.
So that's not the issue. I was just, it was the off, the others are right in the middle of the road, and that one's over to the side. Thank you.
Yeah, that may have just been a mapping issue as well.
You're fine. I appreciate the reassurance. Thank you. Questions?
Most of these projects, there's no financing been identified or anything so far. They're just on our wish list for now.
Yes, correct.
And we're after funding.
Yes.
Outside funding, as best every opportunity.
Right. This is a great opportunity to go after this project. The transportation component's about one point five million dollars. The city and university have identified a significant amount of that, but we're still looking for other opportunities. This would be a great way to help save on the cost of that project if we were to be awarded it.
And a lot of our sidewalk work has been grant-funded over the years, too.
Yep.
So that, this is a great opportunity. No? Okay. So I think we are out of questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Great.
Yep. And now I'd like to open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to come forward to support or not support the proposal. Let me, okay. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion from the Commission?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment at the public hearing.
Oh, good.
I just say that I appreciate Stephanie's update as well as the presentation. I think the background that she has with the MPO and also with the Bike and Pedestrian Organization and the master plan that we have, always seeking more and more grants is always a good idea. So I, I do approve the, the proposal, and hopefully we can get some monies to come in to make those improvements as, as presented.
Mayor, I would like to go ahead and move that we approve first reading of an ordinance amending the Manhattan Urban Area Comp Plan by adopting and incorporating the amended Bicycle and Pedestrian Systems Plan by reference as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. The second public hearing this evening is to consider vacating a portion of a public utility and travel easement located in Lot One, Wildcat Valley Edition, which is located at five twenty-one Richards Drive in Manhattan, Riley County. Rob Ott, Director of Public Works, welcome.
Click what? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Rob Ott, Director of Public Works, I'll make this quick. Lot one, a lot of you probably familiar with the West Side Market old property. They're asking to vacate a utility and travel easement. Received a request from the property owner, and we went through the process notifying all the utility companies. Slim Meyer and Hancock prepared a legal description and a technical drawing that went out to all the utility companies, as well as reviewed by our utility division. It was determined that there are no utilities within that area to be vacated. So there's no harm in terms of private utilities nor public utilities. Also, the area that's being vacated does not restrict because there will remain a travel easement that allows us to travel around to the Wildcat Creek Lift Station, which services about two-thirds of the geographical area of Manhattan for sanitary sewer. So we're still preserving that right to travel and reach our property. And with that, possible motion, public hearing, that we find that there are no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation of both the utility easement as well as the travel easement located at this address. And Commissioners, I'll stand for questions.
Commissioners, do you have questions?
Excellent.
I think it's a sliver of land there. Okay. Seems pretty reasonable. If there are no questions from the Commission, I'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Does anyone wish to comment on this item? If you do, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing portion and move on to whether, would the applicant like to make any comments? Or probably none are needed. I don't know.
I think so.
Who the applicant is. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners can ask questions at this point or a motion?
Mayor, I move that we find no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby. And approve first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of a utility and travel easement of five twenty-one Richards Drive.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Motta.
Yes.
Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel.
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are you staying on? All right. The next item on the agenda is to consider vacating an alley located in the three hundred block between Pierre Street and Houston Street. Rob Ott?
Yes. I give a few folks night off, so.
You do?
Not as good-looking as Mr. Johnson, but, so you're correct, as in your opening statements, this, this one and the next one are somewhat interconnected, but we do have to do separate motions and separate public hearings. So this is the first one. This is in regards to the Art and Light Museum. What we're talking about is this alley here, request to vacate that alley. Have it highlighted here in red. As such, there is a, the commission has already approved a development agreement with the property owner in terms of relocating the sanitary sewer. We actually have plans in-house that we're already reviewing. We understand that the developer, through their prime contractor soliciting bids for relocation of that sanitary sewer, currently sanitary sewer drains to the east. And for fun, we thought we would go north and then east, and then there's a portion that'll have to remain that will continue east, and then there's also a portion somewhere in here that will go west. So again, we like to keep it complicated as possible, but we still have to maintain service for sanitary sewer.
So it's going down Houston Street instead?
Yep. That is, that is correct.
Where does it, where does it come from to, to that alley? Down Fourth Street?
So if you go, if you go further west, Commissioner Mayor.
Right.
It's traveling east.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously goes down the alley to Third Street and then so on, so forth.
My question is, where does it come from the west? Is it the alley along, in the four hundred block instead of the three? Okay, thank you. That was all I wanted to know.
Yeah. And, and there's certainly going to be an opportunity with the sanitary sewer and the depth. There's some discussions that we're having, this intersection, this is outside of the hearing. There's certainly some opportunities to address some safety concerns. Gina Scroggs from DMI and myself have had discussions over the years about this intersection, as well as we have some antiquated storm sewers. So there's some opportunities here for synergy of capitalizing on multiple projects. That'll be probably coming back to you all again. A little bit outside the vacation, I'm just trying to give you the overall big picture of things to come, try and address a number of different deficiencies.
The path will be the Fourth Street Alley, then north on Fourth, and then east on Houston.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
That is correct, Mayor.
And then where does it go on the east side?
I believe it goes north.
North.
And then, I want to say Leavenworth. I'd have to.
No, I just wondered. If it turns around and comes back south again, but it doesn't.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I have to, I don't have every sewer line memorized.
You don't? Memorize?
I have a lot. I don't have everyone. I have a lot. So again, just like the previous process, we sent out the request for vacation to both ourselves as well as private utility companies. All responses were in support of the vacation. And again, there is a plan in place for the sanitary sewer. Hence, we find that no private rights will be injured, and we'll ensure that we continue to maintain service to remaining properties as well as the new museum that'll be placed there. So with that, Commissioners, stand for any questions.
Questions?
Is that alley, is it functioning as an alley right now?
Yep.
You can drive down it and everything?
It is. It's like a fifteen-foot wide, yeah. It's like every other alley in the Ward District, Commissioner.
All right. Very good. But it's not a through alley?
Help me out, what you mean by a through alley?
It's a half-block. It's not, it doesn't go up from Third to Fourth or Fourth to Third. Okay. Thanks. Okay, are there other questions? All right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Rob. Would the applicant like to speak or make a presentation? All right, does any Commissioner have an additional question of the applicant? We've asked our questions, all right? Let's see. So I will, I think I opened, I would open the public hearing now for anyone who wishes to come forward to speak to this issue. If you do, please come forward. If you do, please come forward. And I have a paragraph to read if you do. Okay. I will read this little paragraph. Members of the public that sign... You didn't, I don't have to read that. Please state your name and residential address and/or the organization you're representing. For the record and for those listening or watching this evening, each speaker has five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the Commissioners nor the staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will take your comments under advisement.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I just got a quick...
You want to identify?
My name is Julie Gobert-Walter. I'm Executive Director of North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging. We're located at the corner of Fourth and Houston. And my only comment is that as plans are being created for the intersection, that our agency definitely wishes to have conversations about planning and structure. We have significant challenges in the area in terms of parking and traffic. And I just want to make that statement and that basic request. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak to the issue? All right, I will close the public hearing. Would the applicant like to make any final statements? Commissioners, you have questions, further questions, or is it pretty straightforward? A motion?
Mayor, I find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby. And approve first reading of an ordinance vacating an alley located between the Third and Fourth Street and between Pierre and Houston Street.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there commission discussion? No? All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
You're here for the duration, right?
Third and final appearance.
Third and final. This item on the agenda is to consider vacating a portion of Pierre, the Pierre Street located in lots 333 and 334 of Ward One, City of Manhattan, Riley County, Kansas. And Rob Otte?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just completed the first reading of vacating this alley. What we're talking about next is this portion down here. It's a remnant that KDOT purchased for the old River Bridge. So again, just kind of highlighting what we just passed as a first reading, which is this alley up here to the north. And what we're discussing now is this polygon or triangle wedge, whatever you want to describe it as. Again, you can kind of see that the existing right-of-way, just as you would see for a normal street, will be preserved. So that traditional, you know, 60 feet of road right-of-way will be maintained for Pierre. What we're vacating is this area in red here that's kind of a remnant property that KDOT purchased long before I came along to the city. So with that, no utilities are currently located within that right-of-way. I don't have a big, long story of improvements. Pierre Street is what it is today. All the utility companies, both private and our in-house, have responded and all responses were in support of the vacation. Again, Mayor and Commissioners, we find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience. Hence, we recommend that you all approve this vacating of public right-of-way. With that, I'll stand for questions.
I'm, seems to me that this is just an accident, leftover accident from history. But it occurs to me that there might be some of these around the community. Would we be, I mean, I know we don't want to create work, but it slows down a process just because it's got to be dealt with. And I don't know, I don't know how many there are.
You know, I guess big picture wise, Mayor, over the past, you know, along Fort Riley Boulevard, a lot of the streets that are disconnected from Fort Riley Boulevard, we have vacated in the past. We do do it on a request basis versus just going out and blatantly, I guess, seeking those out. Again, there's often limited use, the amount of time that would have to be spent to research throughout the city. But again, you're correct, we have had these from time to time throughout the community. And they're remnants.
Yeah, I know, I just was wondering how many of them there are because they do slow a project down. Whenever you run into one, it's all stop. So, okay. All right, Rob, thank you. Are there questions from the commission? No. Thank you, Rob. Does the applicant wish to speak this evening? Okay, thank you. So at this point, I will open the public hearing. Is this getting repetitive? I'll open the public hearing so anyone in the public that wishes to come forward to address this issue, if you'd come forward now. Okay. And seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And ask the applicant if there's any interest in speaking, any final comments. And I assume since the person, nobody spoke earlier, they won't be speaking now, so unless that's wrong, speak up. But Commissioners may now ask questions of staff or... And I assume there, I see no question marks anywhere, so we need a motion?
Mayor, I move that we find no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby. And approve first reading of an ordinance vacating a public right-of-way located in lots 333 and 334, Ward One, City of Manhattan, Riley County, Kansas.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk, Brenda Wolf, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Brenda. At this point, next, well, we are now at the general agenda. And we have one item this evening, and it is to consider the award of Airport Runway Three slash 21, 321 reconstruction. And Brandon Keizer, Airport Director, is here to speak with us.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the introduction. Brandon Keizer, as you said, Airport Director, tonight I'm going to talk to you guys about our final step in moving this project forward. A little bit of the history of the project, 1979 was the last time that we had a major rehab of that primary runway, runway 0321. So the pavement's over 40-plus years old, far exceeds useful life. The FAA classifies useful life of pavement of roughly 20 years, and then after that 20 years hits, it makes it eligible for grants and for reconstruction. There's a three-phase basically process that started roughly five, four, four to five years ago. And the first phase of that was the master plan that was brought to the commission and approved, that started in July of 2018 and then was completed in October of 2020. Following the master plan, we moved into design, which was also brought to the commission and approved to move forward. Design basically looked at, you know, how to build the runway project, the scheduling, and then obviously the cost that was associated with it. That started in August of 2022 and was completed in this year, in April of 2022. Started in August of '20. It's basically a year and a half long project. And then following that, now here we are looking for construction. I came to you guys in February with Olson to talk about getting your approval for an RFB. You guys granted us that approval and we issued an RFB in May of 2022. We had a bid opening of June 21st of '22. And then following that bid opening, now I'm coming to you to see if you approve and award this contract or this construction project. A little bit about the project layout, I know you guys have seen this before. Primary runway, it's highlighted there in yellow, will rubbleize the existing concrete, reconstruct the intersections, which include the runway, Crosswind Runway, which is 1331, reconstruct Taxway Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, Echo, and Foxtrot, and then remove Taxway Delta. The reason that we're removing Taxway Delta is because of a change in the FAA design standards, where the FAA no longer allows a taxway to have direct access from a runway to a commercial service ramp. We'll also replace the lights, signs, do a little bit of navigational aids work, and then the contractor will perform grading. The project will be done in four different phases. The first phase would start September 22nd and would go from March 23. This would not, this phase would not have any airfield closures. The purpose of this phase is allowing the contractor to purchase some of their construction materials, set up site work, and do some grading, remove some trees off of the airfield. The airfield will not be affected through this phase. Following Phase One, we'll move into Phase Two. Phase Two has two subsections, 2A and 2B. 2A will be a three-day closure, and the reason for that closure is to allow the contractor to create a temporary threshold by reducing that primary runway length to 5,800 foot by 150. That amount was designated by the airline because that was the minimum that they needed to continue to operate. So following that three-day closure, we go into Phase 2B where the runway is reduced to that 5,800 by 150-foot length. The airline will continue to operate. That phase will go from March 29th to May 12th, 2023. And you can see highlighted in that red, that's where the contractor will work. The contractor will start the work on the runway two-end approach over here by Taxway Alpha and Foxtrot and then proceed and work as their way down to the approach of runway three. Following the completion of Phase Two, we move into Phase Three. And unfortunately, this is because of the layout of our airfield, we have intersecting runways. This is when the contractor would do the intersection work for the project. And during this phase, the entire airfield will be closed. We're looking at roughly 67 days or a little over two months for that phase, and that's from May 12th to July 19th. Once that is completed, then our Crosswind Runway, runway 1331, will be open, which will allow some of our GA traffic, private charters, and some of our smaller commercial, or smaller charters and some of our private activity to occur. Unfortunately, during this phase, the rest of the primary runway will still be closed as the contractor basically finishes up. During this phase, the airline service will also be suspended. This phase lasts roughly 44 days, or total closures for 0321 is roughly three to three and a half months. Here's the schedule, just a real quick outline. I know I kind of talked fast through that, but Phase One, no impacts to daily operations. Phase Two, it's those three-day closure. We picked that closure based on our conversations with the airlines for those phases. It's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday closure, which is typically when we see reductions in service. We, bookings, employments, et cetera. Phase 2B, runway 321, the primary runway will be reduced in runway length, but the airline will continue to operate. Once we get into Phase Three, unfortunately, the whole entire airfield is closed, but the airspace will be open. So helicopter operations can still proceed during Phase Three, and we can also have some low approaches. So some of our flight schools and things like that, they could come into the airspace, shoot some approaches, work off the tower, bring some activity also to the field. And then Phase Four, the Crosswind Runway will open. Again, a lot of our GA private and smaller charters will be able to operate, and the primary runway will be closed. Phase Four completed August 31st, with complete construction of the project on September 1, 2023. So during the design phase, when we figured out which path we were going to move forward with construction, we started looking at, well, what is this actually going to cost? And our first estimate that we received from Olson, who was our engineer that was awarded the design, and they used a subconsultant, Conoco, they provided this estimate in July of 2021. And the total amount at that time was roughly $47 million for this project. You can see that the local funds or the local share, the city's portion of it, is setting at $10,600,000, close to $11 million. And the reason for that substantial cost is because early in the design phase, the FAA determined that they were, what was only eligible for construction was to rebuild the runway at 100-foot width instead of the current dimensions at 150. And so we've had a lot of long conversations and with your guys' approval also or support for, we knew that we needed to build it back at the 150-foot width. We had to have that for our partnerships with Fort Riley, K-State, and some of our other companies that bring in some significant large charters because they would be significantly impacted by that reduced width. And so the process was that we were going to move forward with that. So we got to work trying to find ways to bring down that local share, bring down the total cost. And the first thing that we did is we worked with Olson and they started floating some ideas about what if instead of adding a middle layer on that rubbleized concrete that we poured in certain sections, we put, poured the concrete directly to that base and not put a stabilizer or an asphalt midsection in between there in certain portions of the airfield. Seemed feasible for us, they provided a write-up, we submitted it to the FAA, the FAA took a long, hard look at it, and they said, you know what? We agree with you. They sent it off to the headquarters and it was approved by the FAA. That modification of standard reduced the total project cost by roughly $7 million, and it also reduced the construction time by two to three weeks. So it was substantial, based on those early estimates, which I'll get to. The other, the other piece of it was, how are we going to reduce this local share? And is there an opportunity for us to go out for additional funding to help pay for that additional width so that we keep our dimensions the same that we have right now? We were fortunate enough that we were made aware of the Defense Community Infrastructure Program grant. We applied for it and we were lucky enough in September of last year to be awarded it, which basically covered that additional 50-foot width. That significantly pulled down that local share amount. And I will say that we believe that this, we are the first airport that received a grant from the Defense Community Infrastructure Program for this type of work. I know we've got a lot of calls from other airports going after this now that after we've...
Saying, how did you do that?
Set the precedent.
I'm sure. Never do it again.
So then six months later, so that was the work that we did to bring down the cost. And then six months later, of course, when inflation, prices are through the roof, we were asked for another estimate from Olson, Conoco, and they submitted one. In January of 2022, it brought that local, or that total cost, which was 47, almost 48 million, down to 43, close to 44. So we didn't realize the full 7 million, but we still brought that down. But the big thing, the big item to look at is now that we have that DESEP grant paying for the additional 50-foot width, which the FAA deemed ineligible, that brought the local share down from 11, almost $11 million to 4.3. Happy to see that. So as I mentioned, in February, we came to you guys, got your approval to go out to bid for this project in May of 2022. We put it out to bid and then we had a pre-bid meeting that we made mandatory. We had a lot of regional support, a lot of really big regional companies that came out that had been, basically had this project on their radar because we've been talking about it for close to four years. And so they knew it was going to come and it was coming soon. Happy to say that we got six bids, which of course, right now, as Rob can probably attest, which I think he stepped out, but it's challenging to sometimes get bids for projects, but we had almost a packed house for that pre-bid mandatory meeting. We ended up receiving six bids. Five of the six bids were below this engineer's estimate. Couldn't believe it. And Clarkson Construction from Kansas City, Missouri, gigantic construction company that has the capability to do this work and do it in the timeframe, was the lowest bid. Their bid was roughly 16 million or 38% below that engineer's estimate. So when you apply that bid to the total project cost, you can see now, we started in July of 2021 at 47 million, a local share of 11. And here we are today with actual numbers, total project cost is a little bit less than $31 million. I brought down the DESEP grant, oops, sorry, also brought down the local funds and our total amount that now we're looking at for the city shares, 3 million bucks.
You earned your salary.
It takes a team. I'd be remiss, I can't do it all on my own.
The whole of the city, I am so impressed with the, what's been accomplished. Because in the beginning, when we heard how much it was going to cost and it just seemed so formidable, and when the FAA said, and we're not paying for 150-feet-wide runway, I thought, oh my gosh, you know, what do we do? So I think you've pieced, as an administration, the city manager, assistant city manager, the airport, you have pieced this together in a way that we can all be really proud. And you're only going to, the airport will only be closed for as minimal amount of time. And that's important to a lot of people in the community, but so is rebuilding it. When you say, it's got, when the FAA says, it's got to be replaced, it looks fine to me. But I'm sure there are cracks or something going on out there. But, so, you know, it has to be safe and that's what you all... But, so, you know, it has to be safe, and that's what you all and they are looking for. And this has been, I'm so pleased that, we, I believe, are so pleased with the hundred-and-fifty-foot wide, because in Salina and Topeka both have that hundred-and-fifty-foot wide as former Air Force runways. And so we would really have been left out if we didn't have that too, as far as public traffic coming and going. And the seven-thousand-foot long is, that's what it is now?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. So, so we didn't get additional length, but we-
We gained a little bit of additional length because of a change, so we have the localizer that's off, it has to be a thousand feet off the runway threshold, and so we have basically four hundred feet, show you a picture. So we have roughly four hundred feet right here of a displaced threshold.
Okay.
And what this project done, there's some changes in the design, and so we're going to realize some of that back for this project. Nothing significant, but we will realize a little bit additional length.
So we'll have a seventy-four-hundred-foot runway?
It won't be fully seventy-four-hundred. I think it's roughly forty, fifty, sixty feet extra.
That's good enough. I, you know, what's a fifty-foot?
Yep. So it'll continue to be able to, the dimensions that we're building it back will continue to support K-State, Fort Riley, American Airlines, a lot of our general aviation public, our private public, for twenty, thirty, potentially even forty years. I mean, hopefully, this is the only time that I come to this commission in my career. I mean, it's funny, it's the very first one that I'm presenting to you guys on. It's a substantial project, but this pavement should definitely last us for another thirty or forty years, and it's just going to be amazing to see. If you think about what that airfield and what this community looked like in nineteen-seventy-nine, when that pavement was put down, to what it looks like now. And then, obviously, the explosion when American Airlines came in in two thousand nine, and just the changes that we've seen from them. So it's definitely something that needs to happen, and I'm happy to present to you that it's lower than what we anticipated. And, I mean, I know it's going to be a difficult project, but we've started the communication with not only our tenants, the businesses, Fort Riley, K-State, with you guys. We've been talking about this project for a long, long time, and we'll continue to talk through it and continue to work with those partners throughout this whole entire closure. And I'll, can't wait until September one, September second, I'll probably be booking a flight and going to a beach or something out of Manhattan, so.
It is so important that we, I'm just amazed sometimes at the large aircraft we have accommodated. A cup, you know, a couple of times, I thought, I didn't know we could have planes that big out there.
Yeah, over three, four-hundred thousand pounds. It's ridiculous, and you see some of them that come in and out, and it's like you can't even believe they get off the ground, but they have that ability.
Yeah, I think the vice president was here. I had a big one with Jeeps and vehicles inside. It was very impressive. I just saw it from the highway.
Commissioners, do you have questions? Comments?
Also, just want to say thanks for working on getting the costs down and finding funding mechanisms and all of that, really good stuff. Question, is there a link on the airport website or the cities where someone can go and see real simple when things are going to be closed and when they're going to be open during the project? I mean, you kind of have something like that up there now, although it doesn't, I mean, you got the phases, but it doesn't necessarily give you those exact dates. Just looking for some real simple that we can refer people to and-
Yeah, that's, that's actually funny, that me and the Assistant Airport Director, Kim Boyce, were talking about that today, is, you know, following this week, we'll start putting the construction, we'll put a link on our website, and so people can go out there and look and see this schedule, and then also see any updates throughout this whole entire process. And then, obviously-
I just encourage make one real simple, this is when things are closed and you can't fly, both for the commercial, private side that, you know, because that's what a lot of people-
Yeah, they're really paying attention to those dates.
That's what they care about a lot.
Absolutely.
Did you want one on the city website or just the airport website?
I would say probably both.
What was your comment? Okay, both? Wave your wand.
Brandon, thank you for the presentation. Lots of good information, and you're right, we've been working on this for several years. So you kind of picked up where Jesse was going, and then several commissioner changes and such. It's always good to see the price coming down like it did, and the, our obligation is three million dollars, and that's a significant improvement from what was originally presented. And we felt like we didn't have any options at that time. So I'm glad you worked with all of our partners on this. Speaking of that sixty-seven days of closure, what does Fort Riley do during that time? I'm sure that communication is ongoing. How does it impact them?
Yeah, so, you know, we actually have an APOED member that sits on my advisory board, and so he's well aware of this. And so typically, what they'll do is, like, if there are any big troop movements or charters, they'll, they either utilize Salina, Manhattan, or Forbes and Topeka. And so they'll just transition to those airports for some of their larger movements and things like that during those closures. The commercial side of it, our folks will probably end up going to Kansas City or ICT to catch a flight during just those really, really short closures. I mean, we're only talking three-and-a-half months here throughout the summer.
And again, it's important that it's during the summer, because I know when we have university events such as football games and such, that's utilized quite a bit too.
Yeah, the majority of our big troop movements or our big charters from K-State and also from Fort Riley typically come in the fall and the, and the early spring, winter months. Obviously, just recently this year, in February, March, they sent them out to NTC and flew out of Manhattan. I think there was like seventeen to twenty birds that ended up coming to us, and so we don't want to impact anything like that. The other reason for that timeline is weather, you know, I mean, it's a pretty tight schedule. And, of course, we're trying to do this at the minimum amount of reductions, because a lot of folks have just gotten used to this quality service that comes out of Manhattan. And so that's why that, those dates were chose, you know, that May timeframe to August thirty-first.
Right. And I know people's habits may change during closure as they find other ways to travel, but I know Ron had mentioned on the radio that we've had record numbers of flights coming and going out of the airport, and hopefully, that is also sustainable during that time.
Yeah, our numbers have actually bounced back better than most regionals compared to COVID. I mean, we were kind of anticipating, we took a very conservative approach and anticipating a slower ramp up, but we didn't see that. And so in July of last year, our numbers really started picking up, getting close to that record year, or not quite matching our record year of twenty-nineteen employments, but close to it. And then we've also seen that this year. If you take January away, and you look at our, basically our load factors, which is the amount of people getting on the planes, we're in the high seventies. In the last three months over the summer, we're averaging eighty-five percent load factor, which is phenomenal. And typically, what we'd see from airlines, when, when our load capacity starts to build up, they would start to bring in larger aircraft or increase our frequencies on our routes. But unfortunately, there's a lot of headwinds in the industry right now. They have a lot of pilot shortages that are going on, and unfortunately, they couldn't send us some more birds, but we're still capable of getting the majority of our folks in and out, so.
It's good to be part of that conversation, as opposed to closing it down.
Well, and it's also great, it's, it's great numbers to have, you know, throughout this whole entire conversation with the airline when we're closed down, because they're going to look at the previous data of twenty-sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. We grew every single year, and then COVID kind of put us in a dip. And then, here we are this year that we're looking at close to anticipated seventy-thousand employments again, flying out of our airport, which is just phenomenal. So it's good to have that data. It's good to show that there's a lot of support for it, to bring them back, bring them back strong.
And, and that was going to be my question. So during that closure, what happens to our airlines and those contracts? Are they understanding towards what's going on, and that's a continuing process, that we're not going to lose anything, but they, that's, I guess, solid?
Yeah, so we've been talking, we've been talking about this project for four years, and so when we started, we got through the terminal project, and then they wanted to bring it, the American Airlines wanted to bring in the larger aircraft, and we came to you guys about upgrading the security program. That's when we started having, following that was when we started having these conversations about this upcoming runway closure. So we've been talking with them for the past four years. I just had a meeting with them about two weeks ago, and then we're going to meet, we're basically meeting every quarter to discuss the project, and then when we actually get close to closures, we'll increase that frequency throughout.
Good. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, as people's habits change, that the airline also understands that this is for the better travel in that community.
And they get it, and they've been through projects like this.
Okay.
So they're well aware of it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to ask one question that'll probably pop up? This is going to be reconstructed during, you know, the summer, and there's more than eight hours of daylight time. Somebody's going to ask me, you know, are they going to be working a double shift, or is it just going to be an eight-hour day? Because that would speed up the project, but I also know it would maybe increase the cost.
Yes, that's correct. I, I can answer that question, but actually, I, there's somebody in the room that could probably answer it a lot better than I am. Diane Hofer, the project engineer from Olson, she was wanting to talk, so I appreciate the question.
I'll have an answer when I get that email about this.
So, so the estimated schedule was based on ten-hour days, six days a week, but there were no automatic weather days built in, and because there may be, what KDOT uses is eight to ten weather days during the summer, so we would expect that if they do have bad weather, that those ten-hour days may be twelve or fourteen-hour days, and they may be working on Sundays just to maintain the schedule. Because we gave them some hard dates and hard times, actually. September first at seven AM, they shall be done, or they have a many-thousand-dollar penalty, so. Ten-hour days.
Do they get any bonus if they finish early?
No, the FAA does not allow that payment of bonus. If the city would want to pay that bonus to the contractor, I'm sure they would take it, but that's not an eligible cost.
Okay, well, that's a great answer, and I, I think, you know, I'm always looking at the budget, and I got no complaints about the way this came out. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Other commissioners?
Thank you very much. I do have a question. I'd like, for Brandon, and for the city staff, city administration, and that is, while our airport is closed, can we put something on our website to answer people's questions? Well, now what do I do? Our airport is closed. What are the options I have? And I know you don't want to route people around us because of the future, but I also think there's a customer service feature here that needs to be addressed.
Wait, I'll go ahead and chime into that. Obviously, we're going to work with the airlines to help promote. There's a lot of folks that have some brand affiliation with American and have their rewards system, so certainly, they'll have options out of Kansas City and Wichita to continue that rewards program, and certainly, we'll look at, at those particular options to try and encourage folks to try some other things, but come back when we're, when you're done and use that. We've talked about some potential for some special events at the airport. We've got a great terminal out there that could be utilized for community-type events that we wouldn't normally be able to occur there, because we need it for secure and passengers. So I think there are other alternatives as well. Our hope is to continue to have, through social media and other efforts, to keep our patrons that have grown accustomed to flying out of Manhattan in tune with the project and providing them with as much information as we can.
My concern is, will our approach be limited to just American Airlines? Or will we refer people to other, like the Salina Airport, or, and just give them some options?
Yeah, they'll definitely have options, but one of the things that I do want to talk about there is when we're, when we're getting into that Phase Four, that's when you're going to probably see a lot of me, because I'm going to start marketing really, really heavily, to say that we're back open September one, and bringing those customers back, you know, to the airfield, and flying American Airlines and the great product that they offer.
I'm devoted to American Airlines because it's our airline, but I also want, I'm devoted to our public also.
Yeah.
And their service, so I, I don't want to trip and stumble and have people upset because of this closure or during that period when they're looking for, you know, how do I get to my destination?
Yeah, and so it will, to add on to that a little bit, I mean, obviously, our staff will be there, and we handle, we, we take a lot of customer service calls, either Kim, Mary, or Eric that's in my office, and we try to help them out as much as possible. And also, that American Airlines has shared that some of their staff will probably, throughout this whole entire closure, still be in the terminal and be able to help people if they have any questions of rerouting or lost bags and things like that throughout that whole closure. So, so that's another customer service piece that will also potentially be available when we're actually closed. But the big message is, is once we get through this project, we're done. I mean, we, the growth, nothing's going to stop us. I mean, with a beautiful forty-two-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot terminal, and then now this runway project, with this being completed, I mean, the sky's the limit, no pun intended.
That's a good point.
Okay, anyone else? Any other comments?
All right. Well, now, thank you, Brandon. Appreciate it, and-
Thank you for your guys' time.
Yep. If you, so at this point, we will have a public comment period. So if you are here to speak to this issue, if you would come forward now. We could give a round of applause or something. But anyway, seeing no public, no one interested in public comment, I would close the public comment period and give commissioners one more opportunity, and they don't look interested. So is there a motion from the commission?
Mayor, I move that we accept and authorize you to execute FAA grant offer AIP three-twenty-oh-five-two-oh-five-six-two-oh-two-two in the amount of twenty-four million, four-hundred-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and contingent upon the acceptance and receipt of the FAA grant offer, accept the engineer's estimate of probable cost in the amount of forty-three million, one-hundred-ninety-four-thousand-thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. Award and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute a construction contract in the amount of twenty-six million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and eighty cents with Clarkston Construction Company of Kansas City, Missouri. Approve and authorize the mayor to execute task order number eight with Olson, Inc. of Lincoln, Nebraska, in the amount of three million, seven-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-seven-hundred dollars to provide construction admin services, and approve resolution number oh-eight sixteen-twenty-two B, authorizing issuance of debt for the reconstruct runway three-twenty-one project.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and our city clerk, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
It's not lost on us how many million we're spending here, but we appreciate all of the, it's almost fundraising, but it's grant applications, it's bureaucracy with the different federal grants. It's, it's like spinning a wheel, and, you know, you come up with the right answer. So thank you very much, all of you, everyone who had a part in this. This is a real success.
Yeah, now do the levy.
Yeah, go for the levy. All right, the next item, we are, thank you very much. We're through with that. The next item on the agenda is the city manager briefing, and the purpose of the briefing is for the city manager to review future agenda items and provide general updates. Commissioners report on meetings attended as a city commission representative and seek feedback, discuss potential training or educational opportunities, and coordinate calendars, invitations, notices, and scheduling. Public comment is not permitted during this briefing session. So, city manager Ron Fear.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, good evening. Maybe we'll start with the planning chart, if you would. And so we've identified the next couple of legislative meetings. First one, which would be September sixth. It's a pretty full agenda. We have additional public hearings that night, three public hearings instead of four. Two of those are budget-related, so that'll be when the main advertised public hearing for both the regular budget as well as the revenue-neutral rate will be scheduled. And then, in conjunction with that, is typically the first reading of an ordinance of the budget ordinance. Second reading would occur then the following meeting on the twentieth. There's also a public hearing that is earmarked, if you will, as a placeholder. We anticipate rezoning for the MCM Industrial Park, which is the Scorpion project, so that did clear the planning board Monday last night, and that will be coming forward for you and your consideration for that rezoning and the first consideration of the rezoning ordinance. We are also anticipating that there would be a first consideration of the Economic Development Agreement with Scorpion. If that comes through, we've had drafts and in discussion with Scorpion on that particular document. Also, on the general agenda, would be the consideration of the international, the newest international codes and national electric code updates, so this would be an ordinance as well. And first consideration, those international codes, there's about nine of them, and those generally lag a year behind the calendar as far as those are vetted, and the fire department has done a great job of interfering- And the fire department has done a great job of interfacing with our local folks that are builders and contractors that have to follow those codes and have had good input from them on that particular aspect. We then have several items that are on the consent agenda or identified to potentially be on the consent agenda. One would be the second readings of all those first readings of ordinances that we had tonight. We also have several bid awards for consideration. We have a water treatment plant booster station upgrade and looking for an ability to advance purchase some equipment relative to that. We also have anticipated salt bids for the winter. And that also would include Fort Riley's share. Remember, we partner and purchase the salt on their behalf and help that deliver because historically, we've been able to get it at a much lower cost than they would typically be able to acquire. It's one of our community partnership agreements that we have with Fort Riley. So appreciate Rob and his staff facilitating that work, work with them. We also anticipate bids for the lime pit sludge removal. That's our lime softening pits, the basins that are across from the water treatment plant on the east side of Tittle Creek Boulevard that we periodically have to claim the lime out of. We then also would anticipate, we're rebidding the 1,200-block alley, which is a benefit district that this commission approved a while back. We took bids previously and they exceeded the benefit district petitions quite substantially. So we think the bidding climate at that time was a little bit challenging. So going into the fall, maybe folks have more work availability that we might get some better bids. And then we also have a community development block grant project that's funded. And that's the relocation of the outdoor freezer that's owned and used by the Flint Hills Bread Basket. So this is actually through the CDBG funds, purchasing a new freezer for their use as well as relocating it so that we can then have a parking lot project that was envisioned to help serve the new recreation center at that location. So those are the bids that are anticipated for that. A couple of final plats, one with the Art and Light Museum. And also the kind of replating of the Manhattan Town Center boundary relative to the Art and Light Museum as well. We also have a professional services agreement recommended for the wastewater treatment plant biosolids treatment upgrade and expansion project with Corella Engineering. And then we'll have a, anticipate having a recommendation by the selection committee for the tributary stream management plan policy review. That's been, I think those committees are meeting and are, those were received on July 12th. And they're doing their interviews of those firms currently. And I think that is, we do have some IRBs for St. Joseph Village. And this is a resolution with an optus to purchase. So they're going to redeem those bonds and conclude that IRB component. There's also an amendment to the foundation park home that we talked about previously. This is an amendment of their IRBs to extend their sales tax exemption for materials which expire at the end of this year. They had some supply chain issues and so it's taking them longer to construct those retirement homes. And that's up in the Grand Mirror off of Vesta, across from Solheim. I think that should cover the meeting on the 6th.
Can I make a comment about that, Ron? We, I had sent Ron an email earlier this week because of the budget thing. And there's about, I don't know, six items, maybe seven, that I would like the commission to formally vote on on the budget as separate items as opposed to just pass the budget. And it clears up some things for me. And Ron can share the email. But basically, what I want to do is confirm that, you know, ATA is going to be funded through economic development. You know, we talked about it, but we never voted on it. That's important in the amount. And then the SSAB and the SAB funding, because one of those is still general fund. And, you know, we talked about one mil and they had a $100,000 increase. And I'm not in favor of all of that. So I want to, I want to nail that down as a specific item. And then the memberships, Commissioner Reddy made a good point. I've talked about that for years, but we've never actually had a vote on it. So I want to actually pin that down and say, these are the ones I want to eliminate. And we can all vote yes or no and, you know, put that to rest. And also this issue with the ARPA funds, you know, to nail down exactly what we're going to do with them. Because all that's sort of been vaguely talked about at, you know, our various discussion meetings, but we've never had a formal vote. And so I would like that to happen on that day.
Yeah, just to add, because I had sent Ron a note with my stuff on there as well. And I brought up at the end of the last meeting, we kind of ran out of time. And it's one of the reasons we added the briefing session at the end of this one. But in particular, the social service budget, SAB and ATA, I want to, do want to take a second look at those. I've got some, don't need to beat the specifics. I've got some stuff that I worked out on the numbers. And again, I don't know how you want to handle it, just make it, we bring these up as general discussions during the budget? Or want to put the items there so we can just hit them one at a time, whatever we think's the best way? And also lets the public know more that we're going to be debating some of those things.
Okay, so that's, we've just talked about budget items. Do you have more in your report? Was that an interruption?
Well, it was because it was that specific day and when wants to.
To September 6th?
Yeah, it's September 6th, yeah.
Okay.
We're discussing the agenda, of course.
Well, I know.
We want to do it on a work session because we can't really resolve anything. And I would just like to resolve each one of those, one way or the other. Yes or no, I don't need to worry about it after that.
Yeah, because I've, well, today and some other days, been talking to people. Obviously, we have people lobbying back and forth for different items. And I want to make sure to be able to give them good direction on when we're going to talk about them and what the items are going to be. So that was kind of the reason there.
I think we normally talk about budget items such as that on September 6th when we're having our budget discussion. Is that not clear?
I think the concern is, is that they're going to, they're going to, we want us to pass a resolution which would still allow changes in and amongst that number, right?
Right.
We just want to know when we'll have that opportunity.
September 6th is typically the public hearing where the public can come talk about the proposed budget. It's a time that you all have used historically to make adjustments that, you know, haven't been concurred with previously. And usually, there's motions specifically made on certain types of funding or where adjusting amounts or sources and that type of thing. So, you know, that's usually when that happens. But it is first reading of the budget ordinance and then there's a second reading of that budget ordinance.
Yeah, I guess the question is, are we just going to leave a one big clomp? Or if we know there's specific items that people want to talk about, do we want a little sub-list of, you know, going to hit this, this, and this? Or we just bring them up?
So each of us could send Ron a list of what we, individually, we want to talk about. And we could have one list.
That's fine with me. That's, that's.
I mean, I don't know.
We just, we just don't have to have specific items on the agenda in order to vote on them, right? If it's a subcategory of budget discussions.
We can certainly identify, if there's items identified, we can highlight in the background that comes in the packet that makes it easier for you to delineate those items.
So each commissioner would have that opportunity is what you're. Right. And, and the public would know that's when we're having our comment session. And typically, that's when they would show up anyway for comments. And that's also the first month, first city commission meeting also. So if there are items that are not related to the budget, can also be discussed at that time. But people need to be clear that to, whether they're going to be advocating or whatever it might be for budget items, that's the night to show up. Because it could be more than what you're discussing.
Oh, yeah.
It could be a whole variety.
Yeah, I just, I just want to hit the, you know, the things I sent Ron, which he can share within the mail folder.
Each commissioner would have different views. So it's important that we have, all have that opportunity. Okay. All right, Ron, would you please resume your city managers' report?
Sure, so moving on then to the 20th. The anticipated, general, there's a public hearing anticipated there as well. This also relates to Scorpion and that development team with RTG. And this would anticipate first reading of an ordinance, consideration for the industrial revenue bonds and the associated tax abatements relative to that. Then we would also have, on the general agenda, the first reading of our utility rates adjustments that was covered in the last work session for the budget with water, wastewater, and stormwater rates and some of the other fee changes that we had talked about. Other items then, there's a number of second readings of the, that were on the 6th. We would typically have the first reading of the salary ordinance that the budget is proposing with the, also the second reading of the budget ordinance. And sometimes that stayed on consent and sometimes you've asked for additional changes. So it moves off a little bit. We anticipate some bid awards.
You know, with regard to the salary ordinance, I know that the commissioners ask you to make some changes. I haven't seen the results of what that is and how it was, how, what the modifications were to the pay study and the implementation of that. So maybe you could provide that to us so that the top 15 positions, wasn't that what you wanted changed?
We had.
Hot pay-wise?
A schedule that really wouldn't necessarily, some of that would be reflected in the salary ordinance, certainly in those new ranges.
I don't, that's what I mean. I'm not sure what got changed. So now, when we're thinking about implementing this new ordinance, it would be good for us to know that. Okay.
Now, but isn't the case on that, you know, we passed the range? This is the way I understand it, like, it's not based on any individual. It's like, okay, this position is paid between here and here.
Right.
And what we've asked you to do is not jump everybody up to that top one except phase it in over two or three years.
I'm not sure.
So that's all we would need to, we would need to know.
Okay. We can, we can certainly provide the information and bring out what we, what y'all approved. And then the salary ranges would just change by our COLA amount. I mean, we've, because the other ones are individual adjustments. So the ranges have already been changed.
Yeah.
They would be just moving by the cost of living adjustment that we're moving the scale by.
Yeah, but the individual pay, we never vote on individual pay for anybody. It's always been the ranges and so.
I understand. But I think we haven't seen those top 15 highest paid. That's what, that's what you wanted to do.
That's a subset of, you know, I understand the, you know, the, the salary range has been approved. It's just the implementation on individual ones is up to Ron to phase in. That's what we ask.
I just want an update. Okay.
All right, I failed to mention, back on the 6th, there was a first reading that was on the consent. It's to consider a franchise agreement with MCI Metro. It's a telecom organization that's essentially taking over some existing fiber in the community. So they're kind of new owners and they're wanting to ensure that they're following the rules. And so they're wanting to establish that particular franchise agreement. Again, we got some awards there for booster pump station upgrade. Also, 600, we anticipate an awarding of 600 block of points. Those are some items we brought to you not too long ago and showed you some examples, some improvements there in front of the library in that 600 block that we've got, anticipate grant funding from transit grants. ATA is accessing for the bulk of those improvements. Again, we would have the budget ordinance and the CIP and anticipate the final plat for the Scorpion track, which, by the way, annexation, y'all have approved second reading. It's been published and it's now effective. So the property was annexed last Friday officially. And then we have a couple of other bids with some mowing equipment. And then also the second consideration of the economic development agreement with Scorpion. So those are the anticipated legislative items for your next two legislative meetings in September. On the back there, we've got some of the upcoming work sessions. We talked briefly last week about the upcoming joint meeting with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, joint work session. You all had indicated a desire to have that down on the floor like we have with some of our city-county-county meetings. So I just wanted to bring it back up. So our challenge there is, you know, we typically broadcast our work sessions. Having it down on the floor creates difficulties for challenges from a broadcast standpoint and our ability to have a quality broadcast that people could really understand and appreciate. So our recommendation would be, if you want to broadcast it, then it would be to set everybody up here. There's about, there's nine slots. There would be a maximum of 12 people. And I think we could share some spaces here. If you don't want to broadcast it, then I, there's no problem going down. So we would just advertise that we wouldn't, we wouldn't broadcast it if you want to have it around the table.
Well, I want to broadcast it, so I.
And I'm going to have to zoom into it so someone can have my spot here today, so.
And there may be a park board member, Parks and Rec board member or two that can't come too. But, you know, we've been talking for, we talk about the joint meeting, but we just don't ever get it done because we've got agendas and things to get done. So this will be an opportunity for us to have a good interaction. So I think it'll work fine. We'll just put more chairs up here and we have plenty of mics. And lean one way or the other, we can, we can make it happen.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have a fifth Tuesday, and so we're not planning to have a work session. We usually take those fifth Tuesdays off and give everybody a breather. And then also, housing market analysis would be scheduled for the first work session in September on the 13th. And looking forward to that update. We also, as of now, we're not aware of any commissioners that are planning on going on the chamber inter-region trip to Wichita and the Oklahoma City area. So we do have one staff person that's planning to attend. So we may have an item for that meeting. That kind of opens it back up. I think that was accurate in that statement. I'm just kind of looking down there, see if anybody disagrees, so, okay. On the 11th of October then, we'd have, generally have the Convention and Visitors Bureau third quarter report. And then that also, though, conflicts with the annual Association of the United States Army meeting in Washington, DC. And at least one commissioner and a staff member have committed to go to that particular meeting. And there was a possibility of another commissioner. And we'll kind of wait and see. If I, I guess if one of the questions will be, if you're two commissioners gone, would you rather not have a work session? Okay. But maybe if there's just one gone, you might. All right, we'll see what our issues pan out there.
Makes sense.
And then we've got a couple openings. One of the things that's in your mail folder tonight that you've been asking for and we finally got ready for you was kind of a report on boards, your advisory boards and committees. And so we've done some analysis work with input from departments and the staff liaisons, made some suggestions there for some potential options for boards and certainly want y'all's input on how that might work and how the board interaction and communication might work relative to some of those issues. So that would be one we could schedule on one of those openings.
I'd like to put that on the first available, which is October 25th. We need, we have needed to have that discussion for a long time. And we may not get through in one night either. We may, you know, this may go on for another meeting. But at least we need to accomplish some things. And, and those that we do make it through can move forward. I mean, we just have to chip away at them one at a time, it seems.
All right, that pretty well sums it up for now.
Are there any other topics that we need to bring up? Have you got anything else in the pipelines for the October 25th?
We will.
Or, I'm sorry, November 8th?
I don't know if it'll be at a work session. Jason, you might. And I know design work in Aggieville on 12th Street might be a topic, whether it's at a work session or a legislative meeting, kind of depends on how that schedule fits. And certainly, the design, the commission, I think, needs to review. And certainly the design, the commission, I think, needs to review the ultimate design of the Midtown project.
It'll be bef, well, you've got that, but you've got Twelfth Street too. We'll have Twelfth Street ready for you before October. So we'll probably bring it at a legislative meeting. But yeah, TJ will need to bring Midtown Fuse final, much like Art and Light was this evening.
Will it be an official agenda item or is it just a briefing?
Nope. The TJ's will be official. Twelfth Street will be, we'll do a public-
Yeah.
Interaction, probably at the pavilion or somewhere close by. And obviously then we'll get back in front of you all with options, get direction on Twelfth Street design.
So I do have a couple of items that I wanted to suggest and see if there's support from at least three commissioners to some, a couple of topics. One, I have gone back and forth a little bit with legal on and I think as all of us know, we've had some issues the past few elections with sign vandalism and theft. And we've, and this last one was extremely bad. So I want to see if there's support for a Manhattan sign ordinance in regard to theft and vandalism of political signs with a substantial fine, say something like $1,000 to really put a deterrent out there. And if we've got, you know, three people that want to entertain that, then we can, like you said, I've already communicated some with legal and they've gotten back to me about it. Have them craft something that would work and then we could, you know, go ahead and pass it. It's not urgent, we do it right away, but then again, we do have an election coming up quickly. And I would hope this would kind of be a bipartisan thing. In fact, I'd want to go to each of the, the parties and say, as you're passing out your sign, maybe make an extra one saying per city ordinance, blah, 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 $1,000 fine. So we could get them put out with some of the people putting out their regular signs. Because you know if we pass it, people aren't going to know we passed it.
No, I think, yeah. I think that's a good idea. I do think we need to have RCPD on board with it. Enforcement is going to be the part of it and legal. Otherwise, yeah, if, if, if it can be imposed or however you track whoever did what, I don't know. I don't know all the issues to it. Having an ordinance may not be enough, but how you enforce it is going to be a pretty big deal.
I did ask Katie to give you a little bit of update. She's done a little bit of research on it currently. And there's some, there's some challenges with it and how that relates to other infractions and the, you know, the, the schedules for those versus this and just, just some of the practical enforcement issues. So Katie, you want to?
So this is, as Ron said, just some practical info from the city prosecutors and the RCPD. We certainly can, if a majority wants to proceed, we would do the legal research and bring you back an ordinance. But a handful of states have a specific violation related to political signs. Not Kansas, and I can't find a city in Kansas that has it. And there could be cities that do it, but they're not readily available. A couple of things the RCPD provided is in 2020. They had nineteen cases that involved theft or damage, destruction of a sign, political sign. About half those cases were a juvenile and, and none of the victims wanted to prosecute the juvenile. And the rest of them, they had no suspect. And then this year in twenty-two, they had none in twenty-one, no election of note, maybe twenty-two. There were eight complaints up and through yesterday and they have no suspect in those cases because obviously a lot of these things occur at night and there's just no way to track them down. A few notes just from the prosecutors, it is illegal to do this already in the city of Manhattan. If somebody steals a sign, then it can be a theft. If they steal it but then discard it so they don't keep it, it can be considered criminal deprivation of property. If they had to go onto private property to access a sign, it could be a trespassing. And then finally, if they just damage it but leave it in place, it could be criminal destruction of property. So it is, it is already illegal to do this. It's just that it's probably under several different ordinances. The penalties for each of those range a little bit based upon the offense. For example, the theft of property of less than fifteen hundred, you can do an up to $500 fine or six months in jail. In contrast, for the criminal deprivation of property, which is you take it but discard it, you don't keep it for yourself, it has a fine up to $1,000 and a year in jail. And these are, these penalties are from the state statutes that we enforce. So a couple of things to keep in mind, or a couple of options is we can certainly explore a specific ordinance. But another option is to actually educate the public on the laws that already exist that criminalize this behavior. We could partner with the RCPD to put together some kind of talking points for social media and otherwise. That's an option. A couple of the concerns that were noted, just practical concerns, again, not really legal concerns, are for, we would want RCPD to provide more input on the impact of this specific ordinance. There's the question of why elevate political signs to a more serious offense than like road signs, for example, which can have a safety hazard or some type of other property. One example that was given was a laptop. If it has personal information, that can cause a lot more harm to an individual than stealing a political sign. So that's some of the feedback about just thinking about it in the scope of all of the types of offenses. And then also just defining a political sign can be challenging. I mean, it's really clear in campaign season, we all understand that. But if it's a sign that says, you know, something more general that might be, some might contribute politically, when is it a political sign and when is it not? These are all just practical considerations for you to consider. If the majority wants to pursue this, then we would want to do some legal research on kind of the parameters in Kansas. And then we would also ask the RCPD to weigh in more, but that is some of the background that we have already.
Yeah. I think it would be good to do that touch base with RCPD and what you mentioned with this stuff that already exists. Again, it's hard to know when people have made comments, you know, we did get a lot of comments that RCPT is, you know, basically saying nothing we can do and, you know, and I don't know if those comments are true or not. But I know that there was a lot of stuff that happened this last one and got a lot of, you know, complaints from people and wanting to have something done about it and possibly just with RCBT and publicizing what the current penalties are, you know, maybe can, you know, do the trick.
How many-
But I don't want to just totally abandon it.
How many complaints did you get? We didn't-
Probably a dozen or so.
I didn't get any. What, a dozen?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, city park was vandalized, the Catholic church was vandalized.
Seven dollars, had theirs vandalized.
They trashed all kinds of stuff. It was out of control. Now, every election, they trashed a few signs. I mean, I know that.
I was going to say, as a candidate, I have had, I bought three hundred signs for each of my elections and some of them just disappeared and you take more out and put them out. I mean, it's part of-
Marvin in the county race, he had the four by four.
Yeah.
He put it out in the morning, but before afternoon was over, it was gone.
Marvin, what?
Multiple times.
Rodriguez.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, there's a, just a reality and then there, anyway, other commissioners, you're welcome.
But if you want to educate the public, you know, passing an ordinance that says, hey, this covers signs, and I agree, road signs should go on there. People shouldn't paint those or steal stop signs. So we could always add those.
It seems-
I think it needs to be put out there and people have got cameras. And, you know, if somebody gets caught, you know, if a particular individual goes around, trashes fifteen or twenty signs, then that's something that should wind up in court. But I also agree if, you know, some kid riding his bike decides to kick one over, I'm not going to prosecute that. But that, that I don't think was the issue this election cycle.
I think we need something on a master calendar that says, what, filing deadline is usually, is going to be certain June, June first usually, and of both every year. So we need something that, to, you know, put something on our, on our screen or issue a press release and just to remind people, you're talking about how to, and then we need, because we've talked about that before. And then a couple of years later, it kind of disappears from the landscape and doesn't happen again. So however we can do that, I think education, I mean, we couldn't, the, the police couldn't or didn't, weren't able to enforce masks. They weren't able, there are things they can't enforce. And I just see this as a kid on a bicycle knocking one over.
Again, I'd like to respond to those folks who had issues that at least we do something to try to lessen the impact in the future.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to reinvent things. If, if everything that we talked about is already illegal, we need to, yeah, and I think part of the, and I don't know if there's, if there's no camera, no witness, I don't know how you do it, but we need to make sure that the, that the city attorney and the RCPD knows that if they, they find some habitual person, somebody who's got numerous, they find somebody's got a stash of signs in their trash can or something or whatever, you still can't prove everything, but I think that's the problem. They just can't find any witnesses, don't have any evidence.
Right.
But if people have got a trail cam, they got a ring doorbell, they got, they get a license plate, they get a description of a person, then I think we, we need, someone, RCPD needs to know, we're getting serious. This is, this is not right. This is America. You have a right to free speech. You shouldn't be able to put up a sign and expect it to stay there, just like, yeah, everybody else can.
Yeah.
Commissioners, I think the crux of your issue is enforcement. And so those questions that we wouldn't be able to answer because the RCPD would be responding to those things, that's the crux, is it's not what ordinance is on the books. And there could be one that might be more of a deterrent, that's possible. But it sounds to me like that's the feedback that you're looking for is the enforcement side. Because these, these actions are all right.
Yeah, and maybe what we need is, we were talking about topics for, for a meeting, is when, when we're doing one, get the RCPD director in to come in and we can have a discussion on and figure out what's the best way to take it.
I think too, if you have, I'd be interested in how other cities are approaching this because it obviously didn't just happen in Manhattan, Kansas. So maybe some other cities have. But I would think that it's going to be really hard to enforce. Like you, the numbers you gave us showed how difficult it is because there's no witness, no evidence. So how do the police, what do the police do? I mean, if there's, if it's not there.
Well, I think it's two, it's two things. One is the, the statement that we're going to be paying attention to it. And two, a lot of people do have cameras. If we do catch someone, we want to prosecute it. And I think that would probably be the biggest statement we could make is if someone does have that camera on and gets them and they see there is consequences to this, I think that'll help everybody out.
I don't, I'm not supportive of prosecuting. I wouldn't mind a stern talking to or whatever, but I think education is what we need to do every time and talk about it being illegal. We have, anyway, so other commissioners, you want to report in?
Yes. I do think we need to address it. I, I do think we need to have a discussion and I think we need actual data. I kind of refer to when we did the noise ordinance. There wasn't a real way when your neighbor calls and said, there's too much noise. By the time they get there, the sound is gone. So I think enforcement is always an issue with all of our ordinances. But I think this is something that we continue to experience and I understand that the other cities are kind of in the same spot we are. It's already against the law, but I do think we need to have input from RCPD and what kind of data they're collecting. If they are getting phone calls, how many are they getting if nobody's calling them? What are some ways we can enforce it? Even if it's in the books, public education is always important to continue that every single time. A big social media effort, this is political season or whatever it might be, going through some of those definitions. Because I don't know exactly what a political sign is. We do know, it's obvious that sometimes, but sometimes it's not. But I think at least discussing it would be good so we know where the gaps are, where the holes are and if there is anything that we can do in a responsible manner without creating havoc for RCPD. Because I'd rather have them do, you know, pay attention to actual crimes that are injuring people as opposed to signage. But I think that's a conversation we should be having.
Yeah, I, since Dennis Butler isn't with the police department anymore, I, we gotta, we aren't getting any RCPD updates like we were getting quarterly when he was the director.
He was here every night.
I know, we should, I think we should, we should summon the RCP director and have him chat with, come in and chat with us sometime in the next month. And we can just ask him about their perspective on this and where he thinks if there's something new that we can pass or do that would make his life easier, then we should consider that. And if, and if there's, if it's just a total waste of time, let's, let's just hear him tell us that too.
What, I think you've given us some good feedback that we can work on specifically trying to identify what's already on the books from a statewide perspective and some education matters. And then in addressing, we'll certainly invite the director, interim director Muldrick to come visit and chat with us.
How long a time do you expect? This doesn't take years, right?
No.
This is-
Yeah, I mean-
Short term?
I just-
Two months or one month?
I just want, don't want it to be something we discuss here and never do anything about.
Yeah.
And I think we initially-
That happens. I'm talking about.
I think initially we can provide you some background in writing via memo and then kind of go some options from there. And I can, I can bring it back up at your, your next report, maybe. Actually, that's only a week away, so maybe not.
The other item I had for an agenda, which actually could fit right in with this board stuff that you just passed out and you could possibly even have it in there, but I don't know. We talked before about the combination of the Social Service Advisory Board and the Special Alcohol Board, making them one board since sometimes they fund the same groups and, you know, one super committee working with that big budget. I think it do some better prioritizations than the, the two separate ones. And we do see duplication sometimes. So that's one of the things, again, we've talked about it before, but I'd like to actually either give it a A or give it an A. And like I said, I don't know, maybe you've got that in here.
We, we actually do in, in the report you got this evening in the memo. We, we do look at options for consolidating boards or repurposing boards. So there are some options relative to the two you mentioned.
Cool.
Yeah, that's a good memo. I read it. I like it.
Thank you. Other items, another discussion item here that kind of arisen based on some timing of an event that, that's going to occur. You might recall, we had a briefing relative to HBO's request for Bridget Everett's filming in Manhattan and the use of the Johnny Caw and, and other, other locations in the city and parks. The commission was supportive of allowing that. I did mention, you might recall that the agreement that they had sent us was pretty, pretty broad as far as their ability to use that image any way they wanted to in perpetuity. They're sticking with that provision. And so I just wanted to, Katie, to give you a little bit of background so that, you know, if you tell us to go off and do it, I just want you to understand what we're agreeing to.
We just, we just-
And the implications of that.
We just want to know, an update and to think about it.
Well, I have a few notes. I hope they're pretty interesting though. We, because I have a general overview of this, of this topic, which has gone on for a while. I'm going to talk about like our trademarks or IP and that includes anything that we would have an intellectual property right to. So this, we've had requests to use the city logo, Sunset Zoo logo, Discovery Center logo, the Manhattan letters, Johnny Caw, from a different, variety of different sources. We have one policy that we adopted in about 2012 relating to the use of our logo and that's only when we partner with a third party for a sponsorship or some kind of event where we, they can use our logo and we can use theirs. So we control that. We don't have any kind of general policy at all about anyone using our logos. In 2017, some of you will remember that the Park Board discussed asking the city, discussed commercializing Johnny Caws. And I'm going to say the NIL because we all know what that means now, name, image and likeness because of our athletes. But they basically, there was a discussion at the Park Board about we should be charging a fee for commercial use of Johnny Caw. We should be using it to promote the city. One concern that at that time was that there's an existing bar in Aggieville that uses Johnny Caw. And there's also merchandise sold in Aggieville by different people and that none of those have a license from the city or are paying the city. And it just wasn't pursued at that time. And I'm not aware that the Park Board made any official recommendation on it. I think it was just a discussion because Johnny Caw was being refreshed and it was something people were rallying around. In 21, before the HBO show debuted, the production company contacted us and asked to use our logo and then they asked to use Johnny Caw. We did come to the commission at a briefing session and ask about that and the commission said no, no interest in the use at that time. So we've been asked again by the production company to use Johnny Caw, also Sunset Zoo logo and some of the other city trademarks. And Ron gave a really brief comment on the agreement, but that's really not the issue that we need the commission to weigh in on. I want to do a little side history on Johnny Caw. We do own Johnny Caw. That he was created by a KSU professor. We're not sure if it's a, I don't know if it's a work for hire or for K-State or the city. That's probably recorded somewhere. But in 1966, the Mercury reported that the city intended to get royalties from the Johnny Caw name, image and statue. And we don't have a record that the city did license it, but they could, the city could have. It just means we don't have the record. We, I asked, I've asked other staff who'd been here- We, I asked, I've asked other staff who'd been here a long time. We don't, no one is aware of us licensing Johnny Caw. But I'm not sure there was any reason to protect Johnny Caw until 2017 when there was this renewed interest in Johnny Caw. So it could be that the issue never arose for years. So when these issues come up, we get, these contracts come to the legal department and our response is the same every time. And this is the main issue, the commission has to decide, what do you want to do with the city logos and trademarks now and in the future? Because we're not a city in which this is a novel thing that's come up once and let's just sign it. We've had a history of the city commissions and city park board and other city officials wanting to somehow license our logo and potentially earning money off it. So we know that our client is the city, has had an interest in that. So the reason this is a poly, policy decision for you is, how do you use your right to your, lose your right to your trademark? You don't use it, you abandon it, you acquiesce to others using it. So if you allow the trademark owner, if you're aware of infringement and you're not taking any action, you can lose your rights. And then the last, and there's other ways, but these are relevant to Manhattan, is improper licensing that does not protect your trademark. In other words, it's too wildly broad. Your options, and this is, is this, this discussion is here because we have a new request from the production company, but it's really broader. And we just need the commission to tell us what you want to do with this, this city property. You could do nothing. And you wouldn't allow anyone to use anything we believe is our trademark. And you also wouldn't take action for infringement. The risk for this is if you in the future want to license trademarks, we might, someone might say, well, you've acquiesced and you've released your rights to it because you've never enforced it. Some cities have, actually a lot of cities have policies. And these are cities that are often in different cultural programs. But they have policies about using their trademarks, their logos, their- I was telling Ron earlier today, the New York, City of New York makes over $20 million a year on the use of the city of New York's NYPD, New York logos. So there are cities that really monetize this and really, really can use this. But they generally, for smaller cities like ours, it's just a policy that has an application process through staff and there's a fee. And then it just, it just allows a simpler review and a consistent review for anyone who wants to use the city trademarks. We'd also need your input on taking action on those we know who are infringing, so who didn't go through that process. We could draft a policy in-house, but I've recommended to Ron that if you really want to pursue this, you, we should do a consultation with an intellectual property lawyer just to tell us sort of the main steps. You could also just take each request individually. In other words, when we get these contracts, we'll give the thoughts on them and the commission can decide what to do. The risk for you for that is you will get in, you know, you're giving that third party the right to do whatever you agree for them to do with the trademark. And you're also, could weaken the trademarks in the long run. So I know this is a lot, but the reason this has always been complicated isn't because the individual request is a real legal issue. Although we have, I have some comments you would want to be aware of if you were to proceed with the production company for somebody somewhere. The question has always been for the commission, what do you want to do with the city's trademarks now and in the future? Because your decision now can impact the ability of the city to do things with this trademark five, 10 or 15 years from now. I can't tell you exactly what those impacts would be because I don't know what will happen in the next five, 10 or 15 years. But it's important for the city commission to give Ron guidance, say, here's what we want to do or don't want to do. And then we'll follow that as we get these requests, we'll implement that for you. So that's a lot to digest, I know. And if you do want to talk about this specific contract that we have received with, at somebody somewhere, I, I'll talk about that separately. But I think getting your big picture guidance, so we know. I mean, I actually got another request totally unrelated to this yesterday. Where some, where a local business wants to use our IP in its ads and asked what they, how do they go about that? So this is a, this is something that comes up, you know, several times a year. So we'd like to have your input and, and for you to understand what it means for the future. Oh, yeah, intellectual property, yeah.
Well, it, it seems like it's one thing for HBO to show Johnny Caw for three seconds on a screen and to drive by Sunset Zoo and see the sign. And it's something else to have a, a bar in Aggieville using our name and Johnny Caw likeness. And so, and I don't know how you now shut that door once the horse is already out either. But, and I don't know if you can make a distinction between those two things. There's the sort of having it, blasting it for a few seconds. If, if that's all, that's all they're looking at doing. No, they're wanting to make a big deal out of it.
Yes, they would like us to give them, I love the language in their contract. It's the right in perpetuity to use Johnny Caw any way they want throughout the universe.
Yeah, that's, that's a bit broad, so.
So. It's a great, it's a great quote, throughout the universe, in perpetuity. Free and clear of any of all claims for royalties, yeah. So they are not asking to limit it, they're asking-
How do you distinguish between the statue, when you just, I mean, it would take a legal description, right? Between the bar and the Johnny Car, the Caw that's in the park?
You, so what we own is-
The use of the Johnny Caw, who owns the words Johnny Caw?
The City of Manhattan, as far as we know.
And the bar didn't ask us.
They did not ask us, that we're aware of.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess someone, some other staffer before. But it's the name, image and likeness of Johnny Caw and the actual physical statue is owned by the City of Manhattan, as far as we know. Anyone who's, and there is a difference between, there's fair use, this is all way outside the bounds of this, but there's fair use, there's non-commercial use. But we're really talking about commercial use here. Because commercial use is what people charge for. If you're going to use somebody's intellectual property commercially, usually pay a fee for it. And that's how you protect it.
And I guess the example of that would be the Power Cat. Obviously, K-State gets royalties anytime anybody wants to officially reproduce that, that Power Cat and make money off of it. So it's, that's the simplest terms of, and if we did something similar with our registration and copyrighting and, and intellectual property, we could charge a royalty for it. I've seen, and, and filming. So Lawrence has a policy that requires a special use permit and you have to pay a fee to go into the park or wherever you're going to if you're going to use that film for commercial purposes.
Just, and filming in the park?
Just city property.
City property.
It's just, it's because it's their property. And it's only commercial, as Ron said.
Right, yeah.
And I think the university does a really good comparison. Because K-State obviously does this, KU does this. And they have a process, a policy they've established, a process that someone goes through and they pay for it. They sign a contract to use it in the way that they paid for. So I think that's a great-
Let's do that then.
So we can do that. And that's, I mean, that's going to take, that's the process that we need to develop.
It's going to take a year.
Well, a couple, a couple of questions. This universal, in the universe usage, is that just, just for Johnny Caw? Or is that including any others of our stuff?
The proposed contract is for Johnny Caw.
Okay, so specific for Johnny Caw.
Yes.
Now, do they want, is there, they in the process of doing something? Or do we have a time pressure?
I, I should say they made a separate request for Sunset Zoo for the same agreement. But as, like Sunset Zoo, but it's just, they, they're requesting each piece of trademark, each trademark separately. So they did also contact the zoo to use their logo.
Okay, so we've got-
Those two. And the prior-
And both are throughout the universe?
Yeah, prior, the last time we brought this to the commission in 21, they asked for our city logo. So the actual city, not the zoo as well. But they haven't asked for that this round, that I'm aware of.
So sorry, I was going to say, I think it's important to do that. I think it's important to have some kind of royalty, some kind of charge. But also in a expedient manner, since I don't know what the timeline is on this. And to other grandfather ones that already have it, instead of penalizing, you can't do that.
That's not a possibility, Commissioner.
Oh.
You, if you're going to claim trade rights, you have to protect your right or you lose your right. There is no grandfather.
So if we said Johnny Caws now, you know, this is what you need to do. But the ones who are using it for commercial purposes now have to pay some kind of a fee or a charge for that.
That's what, I would recommend that we get input from an IP lawyer, but that's likely going to be their recommendation that, because the law is clear that if you, if you acquiesce, if you're aware of someone using your mark and you don't take action, then that weakens your right to the mark.
I think we need to do that.
How long do we?
I think we need to, sorry, I think we need to use, if they're using it for marketing purposes and they're making money off of it, it only makes sense that we also make a little bit off of that because it is our trade, and also make sure they're using it. How they use it is very important as well. But I don't know the timeline on this. For example, for HBO, I don't know what their timeline on it.
How long do we have, is my question?
They're here this weekend.
But they're filming, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if that matters right now or not. But I, I certainly don't want them-
I mean, have they presented it to us like they want this by the weekend to do their shoot? Or, or do we know?
I haven't seen that specifically. I, I mean, I understand commissioners were contacted, but-
Yeah, the phone call I got- Made it sound kind of urgent.
Right.
Well, the phone call I got, well, I, I had a recording that Bridget Everett would be in town this weekend. And, and there still wasn't a decision by Manhattan with regard to the use of those images. And they're interested in pursuing that. I don't, I didn't take that, that, that they expected something overnight. But, I mean, it's been a couple of months since we had brought this issue, when this issue came up too. So I, I would like to proceed with all due-
My message made it seem urgent, do, I don't know for sure. I mean, it just-
Yeah. Seems like good business for us to move forward. And that doesn't mean knock everything else off the table that the legal office is doing either. But I don't know how much time we have before we lose it type discussion.
Are you referring to the, I don't know, I haven't, they haven't communicated with the city directly? I mean, in terms of the city being legal staffer or Ron's office. So I, I can't speak to that practicality.
We know less than you do.
What, what, if, again, what I hear you saying is that the commission would like the city to explore and make efforts to protect its right to trademarks it might hold.
Sure.
That's what I hear. And that's always been the crux of the issue for the commission, is what do you want to do? Do you want to release them and not worry about it, which you can do? It's just in the future, when the Park Board or someone wants to access, we'll say we've, we don't really have, we've kind of released that right.
So how much is the fee that these other communities charge?
That varies. And we'll have to, when we were, if, if the commission's directing us to explore that and bring that back, we would bring you back the fee recommendation.
Well, sure.
So, I don't know.
I'd, I'd like to see us do that, I said that before, I think, you know. And then we can hash out, you know, Johnny Caw bar. I know there's a couple of them in Kansas. And, and also Manhattan uses it as, as a, as a symbol down there on points. There may be some others, but you know, there's ways to, to address that. So that, you know, when you get into the enforcement of it. Now, my other question is, you know, HBO wants to just have this blanket, we can use Johnny Caw for anything. Can't that be changed to just say you can use it for this, this show that Bridget Everett is in? And that's it?
Well, we can, we can attempt to negotiate that, Commissioner, and that would help us with, and, and there's several things in there that are a problem. Really, most of the contract would be a problem because they want us to warrant that we own all the rights we're granting and will indemnify them if any third party makes a claim. So in other words, we know there is a K-State professor involved in this, you know, with Johnny Caw. We don't know the, if the, that person has any rights. There's some, there's other issues, but we could do that, but, and, and that's one option. But just so you know, that still creates the issue of weakening our right potentially with respect to the other uses of Johnny Caw. So it helps us with this one production company. We can try to limit them, but the fact that we're only having a contract with one person and we're saying we own it, but we're not pursuing the same approach with others using our mark, weakens our rights overall. I hope that makes sense.
We still don't have any formal documentation. I mean, I couldn't find anything at the historic museum. And I did some research on, we're working on the Johnny Caw Plaza. And I, you know, Fillinger didn't even copyright his book. You know, he, he sent it to the, you know, the Library of Congress, but, but, you know, there's no copyright on any of it.
And he didn't do it as part of his K-State responsibilities. It was obviously, I mean, that wasn't his, what, he was a professor of what, physics or something?
No, he wasn't, wasn't physics, but, but-
I don't know what it was.
But you know, there were, there were three of them involved because there was an art professor also that designed it. And so you have, you know, so, so it stands to reason, you know, probably the city could take ownership, but nobody ever did it formally.
Well, it's on our park land.
Yep.
And it is seen as a community's, development of it is a community service, so.
So I could see us, you know, doing it and then, you know, pursuing whoever else is using it, just sending them a letter saying, hey, you're using our thing, pay us a dollar or whatever. You know, each one could be taken care of, so it's not unreasonable. And then that, that would make it legal and we wouldn't have somebody, you know, marketing Johnny Caw. Because that, that could happen and that would not be a good thing. You know, being used in this one HBO production is probably good press for the city. You know, the way I see it, but-
How many other Johnny Caw bars are there, do we know?
Well, it's, it's things like Acme Gift Shop probably has a glass with Johnny Caw on it. And so they should pay us a quarter if they're going to put Johnny Caw in a glass. That's kind of what the Power Cat, Power Cat logo thing works. But I think, I think with HBO, they just don't want to come back every year and every time and ask for everything. So they're kind of wanting us to give them everything so they don't have to keep draping back here, paying us $100 every time they want to do something. And, and tough, we ain't going to do that. I, I think we, we can, I think we need to pursue it. Find out what K-State, how much K-State charges, how much Lawrence charges for things. We're not going to get, I don't think we're going to get rich on this deal. But at least it, it does sort of protect things and, and control so that don't start making Johnny Caw scarecrow things, images or something and somebody selling it, whatever, and just kind of making the brand.
I'd like a generic policy. I don't want anything with bells and whistles. I just want us to be able to claim the rights to our, the images that have been developed here over time. That, it's a very practical approach.
Yeah. And just to clarify, these, intellectual property is governed by state and federal law. It's all bells and whistles. That's all it is. And we don't, I mean, we can make it as simple as we want, but it, there is a level of complication far beyond our control because of the nature of this, these issues. So I, we'll, we'll really know the track.
We have other work of the city, is my thinking. This is a small piece, but it is something we want to protect.
And, and as we invest, I mean, the zoo, sculptures of the zoo, the paintings, all of those are issues that we'll have, not only with that particular artist and, in making our negotiations with them about future use.
Make it harder.
But also others that want to film with it. So I think it will be a growing component. So I, I've, I've heard that discussion, so.
Don't take pictures with your cell phone, huh?
Yeah, so I, I do have a few more items. I appreciate that feedback with, I think we're, we're good on that direction. So thank you for that feedback, that's very helpful. We'll refer them to the tape of this meeting if they have any questions.
That'll be interesting.
Just a, a few other things. So wanted to pass along that Judge Caffey has submitted his retirement notice for later this year, towards the end of the year. And we've had a contractual relationship with that position. And we are recommending to move that position to be a city employee. They're kind of are a city employee, but they're a contract city employee, there's some benefit, no? All right, all right, never mind. So I'm going to turn it over to Katie to, to talk about the recommendations as, as we, that we've looked at and that I've authorized and that we're in the process of moving forward with.
Okay.
Thank you. We, Judge Caffey will have, I think it's worth noting, been on the bench for us 40 years on November 30th. Forty years. And then he'll, his last day is December 9th. He's a part-time city employee. He's considered unclassified. And that might be what Ron's thinking, is that he's not a classified position. We're proposing to move it to full-time. That's upon, a lot of discussions with the judge and the court and all of those things. He's already at the court three and a half days and paid for that, so it's not a tremendous increase there. And then we're planning to post, open the position next week sometime. And then we're planning to post, open the position next week sometime. And then there will be a date and we, we have some deadlines in there for submissions, but we'll, you'll get more information from the city manager's office. But we are proposing on Monday, October 17th for the finalists, for the position to have a reception at 4:30 to 6:00 to include the city commission, to invite the city commission, the RCPD, K-State PD, if you're interested to meet any of the candidates, you'll have an opportunity. But that, Ron will send more information on that as we get closer. And then the goal is to have somebody that can overlap with the judge for at least a couple of weeks before his last day and then we'll be ready to take over on the bench.
Thank you, Katie. Just a couple of other things. You should have received, probably right before you came to this meeting, a copy of a news release. We have entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club. This is specific to operate a after-school program at both of the middle schools and have, they'll have exclusive access to our recreation centers from 2:45 to 5 o'clock or 5:30. Five? 5:30?
5:30.
5:30. And so this is a time when those rec centers have been inundated and this is going to bring more structure to it. The school district will still be utilizing their gyms for their after-school athletic times. We think it will be a, a better method. They have currently operations at the middle schools in the class, in after-school classrooms, so this will be expanding that component. And I think the news release does a good job of laying that out for you and I think will be good for it. Again, there's provisions in our memorandum of understanding, which I'll also provide you a copy of, that if it isn't working, we can terminate it with 30 days' notice. So I think it's one of those things where we'll still have the Douglas Community Center. Most of the, most of the non-after-school crowd were vacating whenever the school, after-school crowd came in. So I don't think it's going to be a big interference issue because those folks were not participating and utilizing the facility during those times. So, and we certainly have the Douglas Community Center where folks could go to, to do some of those activities if that's a timeframe that folks are looking for some of the exercise and capabilities within those facilities. So that was, just wanted to make you aware of that. Just some upcoming meetings.
Is it possible to channel the 50 or 60 slots into half the facility so that the public could still use the other half in some way? We're allowing these 50 or 60 students after school to run everybody else out. I mean, and, and change our whole, I, I was just sitting here thinking, listening as, as I was talking to you. I just, anyway.
So, so remember the, again, the original goal when we asked the question for the rec centers was that the school district was going to use all of the facility during school hours.
Yeah.
And for school events. And then we would program it in the evenings and on weekends. We changed that with the, the design model that we had that changed, gave basically them two gyms for their use during the school days and after school and gave us rec centers. That's, that was one of our big budget hits because we're not operating a rec center 12 hours a day. So we don't really, the school is still going to use two of those gyms. So that really only leaves the other two gyms and it's hard to mix those and have a control of that site. And that's, we, we think this is a, a good relationship that's worthy of trying to work out because, and, and their goal is to increase those numbers to allow more participation. But it will be a sign-up circumstance and I, I think it's worthy of, of an effort and a try to, to bring some structure to that after-school program.
Yeah, see, I looked at that pretty hard last year. I think I brought up the problem where all those people were there because I, you know, I, I know a number of the folks that played pickleball and they're late and, and Ron's right. They, they left because it wasn't just 60 kids, it was 100 kids. And they did things like grab basketballs and throw them at people that were on the running track and they chased people off the pickleball courts and they were, they were out of control. And so I think this is a great solution because we need to put some structure in there. And I think, you know, some of the older folks that were there, they, they didn't want to basically play with, with the younger kids. They were going to leave anyway, as Ron says. And so the fact that they won't be able to use it from, you know, 3:00 to 5:30, I just don't think that's a crisis. You know, most, most people are working anyway, you know, 5:30, fine, you can go there. And if you want to go, you know, earlier, the Douglas Center is available. So I think, you know, while it's not ideal, somebody's not going to like it. I got a couple of emails, you know, and I asked, you know, Jason last week to consider a press release once this was done because there were some people concerned about that. And, you know, I, I, I still think this is a better solution because without this control, there probably would have been damage to the rec centers and it would cost us money and the pickleball stuff would be damaged and things of that nature. So, you know, while not ideal, I, I, I think it's a great plan.
That's, if we got a problem, here's a solution. If it don't work, we'll come up with a different solution. It's like, let's move forward with something.
I think, I, I've had experience with Boys and Girls Club and I understand what the mayor is saying. I think the idea of having community members there was extremely important, but the vandalism and everything that occurred and not having enough staff is an issue and I don't think we've resolved that. So I think as a placeholder, if we have an organization such as Boys and Girls Club come and utilize it, because we also don't have a YMCA or anywhere else for these children, students to go. And one of the predominant crises in our community has been there isn't a place for adolescents to hang out. And I think this might provide that, that extra piece for working parents where instead of going out there and just rummaging through stuff, there's some structure to this. And Boys and Girls Club has, has that as their mission. And it's probably, I think it's worth reviewing, looking at it. And then if we have enough staff to cover our rec centers next year, maybe that's something we need to do. But I, I don't want to do the same thing that we did last year and expect different results, I guess, is what I'm thinking. It won't be any better. But, and we have the Douglas Center still.
So is this limited to just middle school, the two middle, students at the two middle schools? So a sixth grader from someplace else can't come?
I don't know about that.
This is just.
That's the target audience is each, each middle school.
Well, I know what a target is, but, you know, we didn't expect.
All the sixth graders go to the middle schools.
That are part of USD 383.
Okay, fifth grade. I just, I was trying to pick a lower grade.
I think Boys and Girls Club is, are in the elementary schools.
They're in the elementary.
Already.
Okay. Okay. I just, we didn't expect this kind of behavior either. So we're having to take an alternate, we're having to react, obviously.
There was a, there's a flyer attached to that news release that we passed out at the back-to-school nights last night and tonight. So folks are aware of the program and, and can sign up. So I, I just, I appreciate the efforts that Wyatt and his staff did in negotiating. Appreciate the Boys and Girls Club agreeing to help us with this. And I, I, I'm looking forward to the partnership and see how well it goes. A couple of other things.
Well, that's just a question. So that, if they don't sign up through the Boys and Girls Club, they're not allowed in the building?
That's correct.
Got it.
There's a, there's a grace period through next Monday, correct Wyatt?
Yeah, so school begins on Wednesday. We will operate as we did last year with open admission, drop-in use Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Boys and Girls Club is starting their program on Monday, the 22nd. That's at the middle schools and there are other programs at the elementary schools. So that's, and during those days when we're open, this week we'll be passing out information and have signs and everything to try to educate the kids that do show up those first couple of days of school that this will be the plan next week and you can sign up online at Boys and Girls Club to participate in the program for the rest of the semester.
So the public can use it on Monday and Tuesday?
The public can use it Wednes, today.
Today?
And Wednesday, Thursday and Friday.
Of this week?
Of this week.
Okay.
And then beginning Monday, the 22nd is when this program would begin.
Okay.
And then it's open on regular hours on the weekends, so.
Yes, and on non-school days.
And on, right.
We will be open regular hours.
As a regular rec center.
Yeah. Our agreement only applies to school days with the Boys and Girls Club.
Yep, yep. That, that's when it'll go back to normal hours or normal access.
It's only 3:45 to 5:30. Okay.
2, 2:45.
2:45, pardon me.
Who gets out at roughly 3:00?
Okay, 2:45 to 5:30. Okay, thank you.
All right. Upcoming meetings, we've got, the joint city-county meeting for this month has been canceled. Intergovernmental on the 22nd, the items are the Riley County Health Department and the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition have some preliminary results of the Community Health Improvement Plan. And the school district had indicated they want some, would like some feedback in talking about some security options and procedures.
On what?
Their school system. I don't have any details, so I guess.
Okay, USD secu, is that the same, the 22nd then also?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, both those, both those items are, are scheduled. And Linda, Win and Mark have RSVP'd for that event. We're talking about inter-region. The League Conference is October 8th through the 10th, same time AUSA is. And Commissioner Morris has indicated she's planning to attend.
Right.
National League of Cities is in November, 17th through the 19th. There's a, a special lower registration fee of $500. There's no deadline to that registration. Missouri and Kansas, since it's in Kansas City, they're extending that off, so. That was a lot.
I plan to go, I plan to go to the National League of Cities since it's in Kansas City. If it involved a plane ticket and a couple of thousand dollars for motel and such, I might hesitate. But they don't come that, if they don't come this close, anytime I've been on the commission.
Normally the briefing wouldn't have all those items, but we had a few other things that just kind of fell in and were appropriate for discussion. So thank you for your time. I don't know if commissioners had things they wanted to report on.
Any comments you have this evening? Because we also are, I mean, we need to change the agenda a little bit to make sure that it says that commissioners have this opportunity. Because our, this is, we moved, well, we have the opportunity also in addition to the city manager to make comments.
It says that.
Okay.
I don't. Okay, you're all going to be there. Very good, thank you.
Yeah, and the MPO, we had a meeting. We're in the process of hiring the next, well, program director. I think that's what it is. So we will, once that's confirmed, we'll, we hope to have a press release out soon.
The Flint Hills Regional Council is doing really good things and having an executive director in place. One who already has so many contacts that they don't require that one-year startup and get acquainted through the region and through the entire state. His name is Jerry Lonergan. I've mentioned it before, but he has, and worked with Junction City on the Main Street program before, for the year before he joined us. And he is, is working, bringing a Kaufman Foundation grant and working. It's mostly for the Junction City Main Street, but it has ramifications for some of the region. And we're hiring a grant writer to, because grant writers are in such demand. Everywhere, everybody wants a grant writer. And so that's working out well. The person, the person has been hired and we're moving along. And we had a financial update last night and we're meeting this coming Friday in Alma at 9:00 in the morning. Anybody can come. But it's where a representative of each of the cities and counties in the seven county area comes together as the Board of Directors. So, anyway. Yes, the Chamber of Commerce today announced that they're changing their dues structure and they're going to be transitioning into it with tiers, they call them, or levels. And I'm sure that they'll be happy to explain it. It's bigger than, you know, this little bit of time we have. And they formed a nominating committee to select new board, nominate new board leaders. And I, I think that's about, that was the gist of it. There's not much else that is, because it took a while to explain the, the new dues model. They do have an awards banquet, an awards dinner or something come.
Small business awards.
Yes, all, small business awards coming up and, but nobody's here to talk about it, so I'll just let that go.
I just have one question. I don't know if that information we have right now or in the future. I would like to know how much we, how we are doing with e-scooters and what the revenue has been in this year for that. I know a, a city or two has done away with these scooters because of other issues. I just didn't know what our progress was, so.
Jared, you got an update on scooters?
Instant answer.
Yeah, ridership has been up for the last year. It's about to pick up a lot more. This summer's been pretty steady, right around 10,000 rides a month for May, June and July. Then we usually see about 30,000 rides in October and, or in August and September and a little bit less in October, but still a lot. So those are our big months. From a revenue standpoint, we get 30 cents per ride. We did increase that back when Link, which is, just so you know, we, we've always had a contract with Super Pedestrian who owned Link Scooters and now they've rebranded and they're just going by Super Pedestrian. So ju, if you see that name going around, it's the same company. There isn't a new company that's in town. But the revenue, we're estimating around 40 to $45,000 a year. That goes into the city university fund, which is good. They also do collect and remit sales tax on their rides. But overall, it's been, been going well. We've been working with downtown recently just to kind of shore up some of the parking zones there as well as Aggieville, but Aggieville's always changing with the construction, so we're trying to keep up there as well, but.
Good luck with that, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it. Any other updates you're interested in this evening? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Or if we're ready?
May I move, we adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
City clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Mayor Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. It's about almost 8:30. Appreciate you sticking with us all this time.